This is Lee Phillips' Journey of Truth. We're at the city council meeting here on Thursday night. They're fixing to get started. We've got a pretty good crowd here this evening. Cub Scout group. Don't know what all's gonna be taking place here tonight, but we're gonna see. Tonight's camera work will be a little bit off because I forgot my phone holder. Used to be a Cub Scout back years ago. Ms. Levine and Ms. Barrett were my troop leaders.
We've been with the Loganville Pack for...
Three years.
Two years.
It was two years.
But we were here before with Ryan.
Yeah.
And he was, it was like 2000 and...
It was the mid-seventies back when I was a member.
Well, we're gaining our numbers, sir.
Good evening, everyone. It is so great to see this room full. However, I also know, having been here many times, that some of you folks are gonna be peeling off as we do certain things in this meeting. Traditionally, we have very few left at the end of the meeting. So, I would like to make sure all of you know that we wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving coming soon. Now, some people would ask all of the people in this group to be really careful over the two, next two weeks because not all the turkeys are gonna make it. And I may be one of them, but don't. We shall see though. Okay, I'm gonna ask Jonas Chandler to please come up. He's the pastor of the Living Word Baptist Church and do our invocation for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. In this great city of Loganville, I serve as pastor of the Living Word Baptist Church. Anytime you're writing up 20, you'll see our sign. It will be a big thank God for everyone here. Let us pray. Dear Lord, again, we thank you. This is the day you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. We're asking again, Lord, your favor, your grace upon us in this great city of Loganville, that your will is done, Lord. Again, bless this meeting on tonight, that you get all the praise and glory out of all that we do for the betterment of this community and for all who serve. Again, asking that you be with every leader, Lord, their families, Lord, everyone who works in every position of this city, that you give the glory and honor. We say thank you in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonas. Next, we'd like to call up Cub Scout Troop 536 from the American Legion. And we're gonna have one of these folks coming up and raising the American flag just a little bit higher while they lead the City Plagues of Legions. Come on up. Everybody ready?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys wanna tell us a couple other names too? Are we doing the salute, buddy?
Scout O. A scout, on my honor, I'll do my best to guard my country and to obey the scout law and other people at all times to keep myself mentally awake and morally straight. Scout law, a scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent.
We're gonna move on. Ready?
Dismissed?
Dismissed. Y'all not dismissed? Thank you, Cub Scouts, Troop 536, American Legion. Thank you very much. You know, some of those things they said, wouldn't that be great? We all did that first thing every morning. Now, we'll worry about that another time. Okay, roll call. All the councilors here, city managers here, finance directors here, as is the city attorney. So, everyone's present. Thank you. Next thing we're gonna do tonight is a proclamation for our technical club at Loganville High School. So, Miss Hunsaker, would you join me? Yeah, gonna be a few more of "whereas" as tonight. You know, that's just the way we do things. Whereas DECA is a career and technical student organization with over 262,000 members worldwide. And whereas the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the world. And whereas DECA is a student organization that encourages the development of business, marketing, and leadership skills in high school through classroom instructions, student conferences, and competitive events. And whereas DECA prepares the next generation to be academically prepared, community-oriented, and professionally responsible. And whereas DECA has approximately 18,049 students in the state of Georgia and 130 members at Loganville High School. That's great. Whereas the city of Loganville wishes to join the Loganville High School DECA chapter in celebrating and promoting DECA in the community. Now therefore, I, Skip LaHouse, Mayor of the city of Loganville, Georgia, do hereby proclaim November as DECA Month. In the city of Loganville and urge the community... Hold on a second. I turned it off, but these things have a mind of their own. Y'all know that. And the city of Loganville and urge the community to applaud the Loganville High School DECA chapter and chapters worldwide for their commitment to preparing and developing the future leaders of Loganville and beyond. In witness therefore, I have hereby set my hand and cause to be affixed to the seal of the city of Loganville, Georgia, this fourteenth day of November 2024. So, that said... Present this. You want somebody to take the picture? Mark, take the picture. See. So, with that said, let's give all these young ladies a round of applause. Very good. Thank y'all for being here tonight. I don't know. Bill? You got that side, I'll get this side. Got a wide camera. There. Upside? No, don't even worry. Not the target you got.
Somehow the camera just broke.
That happens, bro. All right. Everybody look at me, please. One, two, three. And again, one, two, three. Very good. Now, if y'all, if you decide to go to college, to Dexter, wherever you decide to go, when you get finished, please remember that Loganville's your hometown. We try and make you a Loganville that you can come back to and enjoy your life here. And that's our goal every day. So, please keep that in mind. We'll always be home, family. Have a great Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor. So, on behalf of Pastor Lewis Metzibow of the Seventh Day Adventist Church here in Loganville, they would like to give their heartfelt appreciation for your unwavering commitment and exceptional service throughout the year presented this day for Mayor Skip LaHouse.
Thank you. I gotta tell you, I went to this church on Sunday. They had a veterans and a first responders ceremony. Very nice. The pastor's a great speaker. I got that 11:20, and I headed back to my car at quarter to two. And at the end of the service, he said, "Well, we have a young lady here that wants to be baptized." About 90% of us said, "We're out." So, but they had enough to do it. So, very enthusiastic church, as is Jonas's church, Living Word Baptist Church. It's, uh, you got some really great young people, really enthusiastic people in those churches. But thank y'all.
Jeremy? Can I see you up there for just a minute?
Jeremy, you called to the front.
He loves this.
Thank you.
It is my honor. The Seventh Day Adventists also recognized you. This certificate is presented to the city of Loganville Public Works Department on behalf of the Loganville Seventh Day Adventist Church in heartfelt appreciation for your unwavering commitment and exceptional service to our community.
Thank you.
That's quite an honor, isn't it?
I'll let the guys know tomorrow.
Did you wanna give us some feedback?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay, there you go.
Can't believe you don't speak, Jeremy. Okay, now we have a presentation to Walton County Special Olympics. I'm sure as our police chief, Mr. Dick Lowery, and his associates. Y'all bring donuts, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. As you know, we held our 10th Annual Donut Dash 5K in support of Special Olympics just about a month ago. And we're gonna do our presentation tonight with proceeds from that run. And just very briefly, I think, I know that all of you know, but for those in the audience who may not, Ms. Janice Tribble was solely responsible for the Loganville Police Department starting this annual 5K run. We talked about it. Retired Chief Q and me and Ms. Janice and Mr. Harold sat in her living room, and we decided we were gonna do a 5K, although we didn't really know how to do a 5K, but we told her that we would. And we learned a lot along the way. And just as we had already started planning for this year's event, of course, we found out that Janice was sick. And I asked all of my folks to really help us and go out and make this the biggest one we ever had for Ms. Janice. And unfortunately, as you know, we lost Ms. Janice just prior to the race. But I read one time that the best thing you can do as a leader, if you need something accomplished, is to just give your people a vision, make sure they have the tools to do it, and then get out of their way. And that's not always easy for me to do, but that's exactly what we did. And they really hit it out of the park. And we had a very successful event. We had a little over double the number of runners that we've ever had before. We had more sponsors. Everything was just, was just better. They did a lot of things that, you know, I'm kinda old and old-fashioned. They did social media posts, social media videos, went out in the community and worked, went to other races and tried to gather more runners. And one of the things that our school resource officers helped us set up is there the marketing class at Loganville High School. And me and some other folks went over and talked to them. And they were gonna design both a run poster and also the design for the front of our T-shirt. And the only two things I told them that I wanted is being the Donut Dash. It's gotta have a donut. And somewhere on that shirt, I want something honoring Janice Tribble. Those are the only two things. And after that, we left it completely up to them. And there were some amazing designs from these kids. And the two designs that we chose, we've got those that designed them here with us tonight. So, if y'all will come up just a minute, we're gonna give you a framed version of what you designed. So, our poster design was done by, y'all come on. It's done by Mr. Dayton Watson. We used it. And as you can see, he added in, just like I asked him to, in honor of Janice Tribble. And I really appreciate your efforts. It helped us quite a bit. And thank you very much for doing it. Thank you for being here with us tonight. And then we also have with us Ms. Corinne Hall, who designed our T-shirt design. And I like it very much. It's a lot better than anything I ever came up with. So, I really appreciate that. And thank you for being with us here tonight. Thank y'all very much. So... I told Kim I was gonna do this without crying, but I don't know that I am. Every year since 2013, we made this presentation, Ms. Janice, at a council meeting. So, that's not possible, I guess. But in her honor and in her name, I'd like to present to Walton County Special Olympics and the 325 children that you guys support. Proceeds from this year's Donut Dash, 22,631. We added it up last week. And with this, this year's total since 2013, this gives you an idea of where we started. First year, it's $4,100. So, we've done a little bit. But that'll bring the total that all of these folks have raised to Walton County Special Olympics to a little over $114,000. We're gonna keep right on doing it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Pete, just so you know, we're terrible tribbles, we're watching this now.
They moved her. That's great.
Dick, you gonna see this peeling off? Okay, we need a motion from the council for the adoption of the agenda tonight. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Mayor, you gotta change the agenda. Before you make a motion, you need to change the amount. Item.
Yes, item 7D. Design proposal is not $30,000. What we could spend if we decided to do the part. The proposal for GMC Engineering is $14,925. And that's on page 98 of your package.
Okay.
So, it's $14,925, not $30,000.
That's all we'll be voting on.
Our move's right, $300,000.
Okay. Okay, now, do we have another motion to adopt the agenda? Hey, we have a motion. We have a second. If we have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda is accepted. Since we did not have a meeting Monday night, because Monday night was Veterans Day, we need a vote, please, for the consent agenda, which is the last month's minutes and last month's financial report. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Okay, now we're gonna move right into planning and development. Committee report. Ms. Lisa Newberry.
Thank you, Mayor. So, tonight, this is gonna be a little different, a semi-combined meeting. Just wanna make sure we're on the same page. Robbie's gonna come and read the cases into the record. And we have three applicants with multiple applications. So, we'll open a public hearing. The applicant will present, the public will speak. Then I'll close the public hearing. And the mayor council will have our discussion. We'll do that two more times since we have three total applicants tonight. Robbie?
Thank you. The first case is before you this evening is case number 824-029. Juan Ramon requests annexation of property located at 520 Brand Road, Loganville, Georgia, map parcel number R5160059 in Gwinnett County. It's about three acres of land. And along with this, he's asked for a rezone. For case number R24-030, Juan Ramon has filed an application to rezone the three acres located at 520 Brand Road, Loganville, Georgia, map parcel number R5160059 in Gwinnett County. The property owner is Redline Acquisition and Management. The current zoning is R100 out of Gwinnett. The requested zoning is light industrial for the development of an office suite. And for this case, both, both cases, the planning and zoning and the application for approval.
Okay, thank you, Robbie. So, at this point, I'll open up the public hearing and invite the applicant up to speak, which is a very familiar face around here. Welcome back to him.
Turn it off. Thank you, Mayor and Councilor. My name's Tim Crater. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Juan Ramon, and the owner of Redline Acquisitions and Management. The applicant, Mr. Ramon, is the owner of Empire Roofing and Restoration located right outside the city at 2387 Protec Way, which is right past Bakery Church Road on 78. Mr. Ramon's been in business for 20-plus years. He is one of 2% of the businesses in the country. That is GAF Master Elite Certified Contractors. And he would have to explain to you exactly what that is. No idea? Yeah. The property we're requesting to annex and rezone to light industrial is located at 520 Brand Road. Yeah, there we go. Figure out how this thing works here. Need your boss come and help you? Yeah, apparently. I need Shane to come up here and show me how it works. Oh, there we go. You purposely do that so you have... Yeah, I'll say. There we go. Here we go. Okay, sorry about that. So, the property's located at 520 Brand Road. It's approximately three acres in size. And it's currently zoned R100 by Gwinnett County. The property has an existing structure, which was built in the seventies, and is approximately 2,500 square feet. And the property is bordered on three sides, about the city limits. The abutting two properties to the south are currently zoned CH. And the abutting properties to the north and the east are zoned light industrial. The city's future land use map doesn't show this property. But the counties, Gwinnett County's future land use map has... but the counties, Gwinnett County's future land use map, has the area classified as mixed use, and I believe that's on page four of the staff report. The city's sewer map shows that the location of sewer is directly in front of the property, and there's actually a manhole, a sewer manhole on the property. The city's water map shows a water main going in front of the property about, I mean, it's up in the yard where the water line is. However, the sewer is within the city's SDS agreement with Gwinnett, but the water is not. We've been working with the city manager to work out the SDS agreement. And I actually have correspondence from the county that I got back a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to read it into the record. Mr. Crater, we have assured the city manager of Loganville that we will work with them to draft and approve the appropriate intergovernmental agreement between the city and Gwinnett County regarding the provisions of water and sewer service to be provided to this property pursuant to the city's request. We believe that our board will accept our recommendation, and that the intergovernmental agreement will be approved. That was from Glenn Stevens, the Gwinnett County Administrator. And I will know if Mr. Roberts or Mr. Rosenthal could add to that. But it's my understanding there's not gonna be a problem as to that SDS agreement.
Yes, we're in current negotiations, Paul, is with the county, with one of the county attorneys.
If you look at this map, the property is within 900 feet of Highway 78, which puts the property within close proximity to a major corridor. And Brand Road is classified as a major collector road in the city's staff report. So the first quarter mile of the east side of Brand Road is within the city, it's zoned CH or light industrial. If approved, the plan would be for Mr. Ramon to move his business to the location and renovate the existing structure. Structure would remain to appear as a residential structure, with the exception of enclosing the garage that's on the front of the house. The office would be staffed by four employees and would not create any additional traffic. The remainder of employees would only make periodic visits to the office. Minimal equipment would be stored on the property, and would be behind a six-foot opaque fence, which is required by the light industrial zone. So it's our belief that with three abutting sites being within the city, zoned CH or light industrial, and that the annexation and rezone request is in line with the spirit and the intent of comprehensive plan, the future land use map, and the zoning requirements of the city. Like Robbie stated, the staff and the planning commission recommendation was for approval of the zone, and the outcome respectfully requests the approval for the applications. And we're happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Okay, so we'll hold our questions at the end of the public hearing. Okay, thank you, Tim. So next up, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Okay, seeing none, does anybody in the public like to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, so seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now we'll open the floor for mayor and council discussion.
Hey, Tim, good to see you.
It's good to see you.
And I didn't get a chance to call you to ask my question, but I just got a couple of questions. One, has he already tried to get this zoned in Gwinnett County? I mean, why does he directly come into Loganville?
I can get him up here to give you a definite explanation, but it's my understanding that he wants to be inside the city limits of Loganville. He does participate in community events, and will be part of that.
And then the fence, is it from the street? Is it?
No, it would be from the back corners of the structure around the property.
Okay, and then I noticed there's a lot of trees. Does he have any intention of clearcutting all those trees?
He's not gonna go back that far. There is a creek on the property, so it has setbacks through stormwater. So that we will be clearing off.
But there'll be some trees taken down, just not...
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have, I have a couple, just because.
Just because.
This is like both times, Tim was my mentor for a while on planning and zoning. He answered all my questions. Now Robbie gets the pleasure. How many crews does he have?
You're saying that he does the work?
Yeah, do you have like separate crews?
Yeah, there's subcontractors.
So they don't work for you?
Yeah, we have subcontractors that do the work, and then our immediate employees are like sales representatives. But most of their work is out on the field.
Okay, so pretty much the four people that work, there won't be trucks with roof shingles and whatnot coming in and out?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's the reason. I thought there might be a lot of traffic coming in and out.
All our work is done out on the field. All the materials get delivered to the job site, and so we don't work in the back.
Okay. That was my main current concern, only because of that curb that you're sitting on. That looked a little dangerous, and they come and pull it in and out, but that's not a problem. Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'll move right into the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for annexation for case number 824-029.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That case is approved.
Okay, next up is I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a rezone for case number R24-030.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved as well.
Okay, so that's one of three cases. We'll do this again.
Mayor and council, next up for you is three different cases. R24-031 Bam Real Estate LLC, Carrum Mahappy Pickens Tucker LLP filed an application to rezone 5.09 acres located on Atlanta Highway. Map parcel number LG060129, property owner's Ann Jones. The current zoning is R44, and the requested zoning is CH for the development of a medical office building. Also included in this case is case number V24-032 Bam Real Estate LLC, Carrum Mahappy Pickens Tucker LLP. Has requested a major variance for the property located on Atlanta Highway at parcel number LG060129. Present zoning is R44. The ordinance and section from which relief is sought is zoning ordinance 119-432, relief from the buffer requirements. And then the third and final case involved with this matter is case number V24-033 Bam Real Estate LLC, Carrum Mahappy Pickens Tucker LLP. Has requested a major variance for the property located on Atlanta Highway at parcel LG060129. Present zoning is R44. Ordinance and section from which relief is sought is zoning ordinance 119-380, relief from the minimum parking requirements. All these were recommended for approval by the planning commission. Staff recommendation was for approval for the rezone and the parking variances, but it was recommended by staff for denial of the buffer variance.
Okay, so while the applicant is coming up, I'd like to declare this public hearing closed, ma'am.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Shane Landham, 1550 North Brown Road, Suite 125 in Lawrenceville. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight, present the case which is before you, which, excuse me, as Mr. Schwartz indicated, is a rezoning request from R44 to CH to allow a medical office building on a tract of lands, approximately 6.2 acres, the total assemblage in between Atlanta Highway and Covington Street. That's north, south, and then east, west were in between, but not adjacent to Bobby Boss and Hodges Street. So the subject property is an assemblage of two whole parcels and a portion of a third totaling, as I mentioned, approximately 6.2 acres. The, one of the subject property tracts is already zoned CH, so it is not part of the rezoning request, but as it's part of the overall development, it is part of the variance request that we're reporting tonight. So here's just a zoomed-in aerial tax map showing the subject property, the assemblage, parcels. This next slide is just to show you the subject property highlighted there in yellow. So the proposed development is a two-story Class A medical office building with approximately 50,000 square feet of building space. Our main entrance would be on the southern end of the site. That's our front edge on Atlanta Highway, Highway 78. We also have a secondary entrance to the north located onto Covington Street. The main pickup drop-off location would be located on the north side of the building, so internal to the site, but we would have access driveways and some parking spaces located on both sides, well, all sides of the building, but the main entrance would be located off Highway 78. We'd have that secondary access off of Covington Street. The first of two variances we're requesting relate to the minimum number of parking spaces. The code requires for this proposed use, a minimum of one space per 200 square feet of building area, but on top of that, three per operator. So first, the code section has, that's a pretty wide category that we fall into. It's banks, professional and general offices, beauty shops, and barber shops. And so that's a pretty wide range. In these codes, often you have the situation where you have these wide-ranging categories, but when it comes to the application of that code to a specific project on a specific piece of property, you have these issues with hardships that pop up, and so that's the case we have here. At the planning commission, one of the brokers, as part of the underlying real estate transaction, provided statements to the planning commission that the industry standard, if you could call it minimum, is four spaces per thousand square feet of building area. Those are just the terms that they usually talk about those in. What we are asking for is a variance to reduce the minimum to 4.5 spaces per thousand square feet of building area. In fact, we actually are showing a little bit more than that on this site plan. We wanted the design that we submitted to the city to depict sort of the maximum achievable parking on the site. You know, once we get into engineering and further site work and things like that, it's possible that we would lose some spaces, but we thought four and a half spaces per thousand was an appropriate minimum. That's above actually, excuse me, what you'll see as sort of a, you know, industry-wide recognized minimum, or at least expectation. So would submit to you that the approval of the variance would not be detrimental to the area. It would actually provide ample parking on the subject property. Another aspect of the code that is difficult when applied to the subject property is that term operator. So I think in the sense that you have maybe a barber shop with a beauty salon, the operators, you might wanna have three parking spaces per operator, 'cause they've got someone in the chair and a couple of people waiting. But when you've got a 50,000-square-foot office building with multiple employees, the parking just skyrockets from there. And so what we are trying to do is balance sort of two code sections. We're kind of caught in between them where we've got this minimum parking requirement that requires, you know, I think Loganville's parking spaces are nine by 19. That's a lot of land area. That's a lot of impervious surface area. And we also have, one of the other variants we're requesting is a buffer reduction, right? So allowing us to reduce that buffer, what we've asked for is to obtain relief from that 30-foot buffer requirement adjacent to residential tracts. The only residential property that we abut is actually owned by our seller. And so the seller has consented to that variance. They don't think it would have any negative impact on their property, and they wouldn't consent to a variance if they thought it was gonna harm them down the road. And so what that does, is a little bit of reduction in that buffer allows us to bump up the parking on the properties. We're trying to strike a balance between those two, you know, kind of somewhat competing code sections. But we are still proposing, as depicted on the site plan, some sort of landscape strip and separation between those two parcels, what's shown on the site plan. It's approximately 20 feet wide. And then we also have some additional trees and, you know, landscape islands in the parking lot as well. So would submit to you that the proposed development is compatible with the zoning classifications and land uses of surrounding property. We've actually got CH designated land, as you can see here, this is a snip from the zoning map, to really, you know, our north, south, east, and west. Adjacent to us to the west is property zone O and I for office uses. Those are other, I think there's a dentist office and some other professional or medical-related offices there. So would submit to you that we're certainly compatible with those existing land uses, as well as the zoning classification, CH is the red, and so that's, you know, there's a lot of red on the map, and so we'd submit to you that the proposed development is compatible with those zoning classifications and existing land uses. Also, just to touch on, you know, I would submit to council for your consideration that the proposed use, it really is a community-serving use. It's 50,000 square feet of Class A medical office. That's a great service to have in the community, not only by expanding access to medical care for people living here in the city, already making it more convenient to go to the doctor and see your healthcare professionals, but just also from an economic development perspective. That's from, I would submit, that it is, you know, a good driver of good jobs in the city, good development, good tax-based increase as well. So a lot of positives there that I would submit to council for your consideration, that this project would bring. During our time working on this case, you know, we appreciated comments we've heard throughout the process from staff and planning commissioners and various other people from time to time. And so there were two, I think, concerns that arose relative to this project. Comments, maybe is a fair characterization, but related to some sort of use restrictions on the property. So, you know, what happens if the medical office isn't built? You know, what are we stuck with there? Trying to have some sort of reasonable use restriction on the property to protect the community and immediately surrounding property owners from some of the more, you know, onerous or intense land uses that are allowed in CH. So we totally understand that, and actually, we looked at our recent rezoning case just to the west. I think it was Koch, however you pronounce that name. There was a, maybe an orthodontist or another sort of office-related use that had some use prohibitions there. So we sort of borrowed from that use and looked at the allowed uses in CH, and submitted a list to the city. And I hope that y'all have seen a copy of that, but what it would do, what we proposed, was to have sort of two categories of prohibitions. The first, which would include automotive by-repair, car wash, convenience stores, hotels, you know, lawnmower repair shops. That whole category of uses is just flat-out prohibited on the subject property. What we would ask is that the restaurant uses would be prohibited on the property, but only within 250 feet of Covington Street. So what that does is that keeps those restaurant uses away from Covington Street, which is obviously less intense than Highway 78, but still allows us, what I would submit, our good reasonable commercial uses on the property in a sort of worst-case scenario. So to be clear, we're not considering alternative developments. That's not what we're focused on. We're focused on the medical office, but just trying to be prudent and thoughtful about the future in case there's a worst-case scenario. And second, was access to Covington Street itself. So our site plan that we submitted had a secondary access driveway onto Covington Street. We'd submit to council that that is very important for the viability of the project for a variety of reasons. Those include operational aspects of the business. Those include safety aspects as well, not just from, you know, fire or emergency vehicle access, but in the case that someone, you know, this is not an emergency room, this is not a hospital, but in the event that someone is urgently seeking medical care and needs to access the property, having more access is better in that regard. People, we're reducing the risk of someone not being able to access medical care or get out of the property to go get, you know, emergency or more urgent care. So we would ask that council not restrict the property's access to Covington Street for those reasons. We've also heard, I think, there are... We've, we've also heard, I think, there are various sort of code aspects, you know, fire code and things like that, that would strongly encourage, if not require, that access from a regulatory perspective as well. So, on that point, Charlie Dickhouse, who manages real estate development for Northside Hospital, is here with us tonight, should you have any specific questions that I'm not able to address in that regard, he's available and he'd be happy to, to address any of those questions. So, I'll end my remarks there, reserve any balance of time for rebuttal, and then we'll be happy to address any questions from council.
Okay, thank you, Shane. So, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of this, of these cases? Anyone in favor? Okay, is there anyone that would like to...
I would like to say a word.
Oh, yeah, please.
And if you would, just tell us your name and your address.
My name is Michael Ridgeway Jones, Jr., and I live at 1091 Mariah Cliff Place, Northeast, in Atlanta, Georgia. I grew up next to this proposed development, my mother can't be here tonight, so my brother and I are here on her behalf, and we're strongly in favor of it. As someone who grew up in Loganville and had to drive to Lawrence School, we were a Lawrence School family, we weren't a Monroe family, so I'm just going to leave that there, but having access to doctors and medical care in the city of Loganville was unthinkable. Well, there were a few exceptions, but generally speaking, we had to drive. So, I know that my mother is strongly in favor of it, I don't know if the buffer thing's going to come up, we would be the only ones affected, we're not opposed to it, but again, I'm just speaking on her behalf because she can't be here, so.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing that, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, this time I'll close the public hearing and open up the floor for discussion between mayor and council. Anna, I think you're talking a bit.
I have, I have two just questions for council. I don't know how everybody feels about just removing drive-in restaurants altogether from the property, I would support that. I too share the concern about Covington Street, talked to a couple of people, because I understand the need for that. Would the developer be open, or how would you guys feel about putting speed humps in there to eliminate? I'm more worried about cross-traffic, you know, somebody coming from Grayson, cutting down, cutting through, you know, getting to 78 or vice versa, so I see the need for it, do you think that speed humps are, you know, the ones that are flat, I don't know what, what the right description is, but something to slow people down might be a, a good compromise, I don't know if that's something that y'all would be able to do?
Yeah, that's something I could definitely support as well, even if it's some kind of traffic control measure, but I know they could design like a winding kind of way to make it less conducive, so it doesn't have to be speed humps or something that will, you know, impede the flow so people don't cut through.
Right. Well, let me get, let me weigh in on that, it looks like in the parking lot, it's not going to be very easy to wind and weave through there to cut through, when you've got Bobby Boss right there, I think that's going to become the, will remain the cut through, and I want to say too, this is a medical facility, if it was anything but, I would be on board with the speed humps, but you've got to put yourself in someone's shoes that just had a surgery, and they go to follow-up, you know, two or three days later after surgery, to get in the car to go somewhere with surgery is terrifying, not to mention terrifying because of the speed humps.
What about just at the back?
Well, you've still got to go hit it out, I mean...
Well, you can go out the front on the 78 if you needed to. I'm just, I, I mean, I, I go up and down Covington every day because I don't want to get on 78, and I, there, the traffic is increasing flying through there, I, I mean, it's a medical facility, so I don't, it's not like people are going to be coming and going all day, but that's not what I'm worried about, but to your, I think that's a great point.
If it was anything but medical, I would say yes in the speed humps, but for medical I don't support that.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to go back and revisit the, because if it's for safety, you could actually put your two, put two entrances, is that my correct, Robbie, on 78, why could you not?
I would have to double-check the measurements, but it's to have, to meet the life safety codes for two entrances for this parcel, they do not have enough frontage along the road, the way it was explained by our fire marshal, Jason Kane, they do not have a road, enough road frontage to put two driveways together and meet the standards of life safety code. Basically, you have to take the diagonal of the property and divide it in half, and that's how far away your driveways have to be.
But if we're talking about the back entrance being for life safety, could we not do what council agreed to do with the project over on Line Street, where that entrance that is for quote-unquote "life safety" has some sort of gate or something where first responders and things, it could even be some kind of gate that's activated from within the building just to keep the traffic off, because Covington Street's not a major collector, but you're about to turn it into, because when you have, say, 150 employees or how many ever's going to work in a 50,000-square-foot facility, it's 5 o'clock, it's 6 o'clock, quitting time, traffic on 78 is backed up, we know where they're all going, they're going out on Covington Street, and we already have problems with speeders, people running the stop signs, you've got two roads right there, you've got Bay Creek, you've got Church Street, they're going to shoot over there and try to go, or they're going to try to go back up to, you're just causing a problem by allowing just daily access to Covington Street. I think the facility as a whole is very needed, I think it's something that's a great fit for the community, I, I like it, I just think we need to be more respectful, you know, Covington Street is not very wide. When you meet two big trucks, like two full-size pickup trucks meet, the mailboxes get knocked down, our mailboxes get knocked down all the time, so you get, so it's not wide enough. City council continues to say that they want a walkable downtown to make it a usable, friendly neighborhood, because if you're going to build that, these are the places that are going to support the businesses, there's not a single sidewalk on Covington Street, and if you sit in my front yard and watch how many people walk all day long, now you're reducing, introducing hundreds of cars a day, not only employees, but patients going in and out, there's no sidewalks for the walkers to walk, so you've created a safety problem with that, so you've got the traffic. Covington Street is the only street inside the downtown area that has a speed limit of 30, which the police are going to give them 10, that means they can go 40. I have tried endlessly to get that reduced back down to 25 miles an hour like everything else, so it's a faster street, faster thing, we have drag racers, they get there side-by-side and they race down my street, they don't stop at the stop signs. I just think that putting more traffic, commercial traffic, just dumping that on the Covington Street, because I think we all know that's where they're going rather than trying to get out on 78, just isn't feasible. If there's any other way we can do it, and if it's a matter of life safety, let's just put in the gate and be done with it, and hey, let's move on, and everything's great.
I mean, that's certainly your prerogative, I, I don't, there is no traffic study done, so we don't know how many cars are going to go out on Covington Street, so that's certainly your prerogative. My only concern is, is that, you know, now you're making, you're forcing people to turn left on the 78. They have no, they have no other options, so. That, that, that's my concern, that was the traffic department's concern, and that was, you know, the fire marshal was always concerned, it's really a safety, and by taking away the Covington access point, you're forcing everybody to turn left, and also, you're forcing anybody on this side of town to not have to get on the 78, adding more traffic to 78 to get to that doctor's office, when if they live here, they could have just, it'd been a three-minute car drive to ride instead of 15 minutes. So, that's some of the discussions that we had about it, it's certainly, the fire marshal, I spoke with the fire chief today, he says if that's the route you want to go, he certainly has no problems with it, it meets the life safety code, so again, it's certainly y'all's decision.
Danny, what can we do about the speed limit? I don't, I, I, I met a boss there, I've been working on that for several years, what...
So, I think, I mean, safety, I mean, it's, it's not, I'm not saying, you look safe, I'm saying, traffic is such an issue, it's, it's always an issue, it's, and part of that is making sure that people that are visiting and going to that facility are leaving safe and leaving, you know, with ease. Pulling out on 78, turning left, I mean, if I was to visit this hospital, this medical facility and I had to go home on a, whatever, whatever afternoon it is, I'm probably going to want to go out Covington Street, absolutely, yes, because that's what our city streets are for. Now, I'm not, you know, I'm not a fan of speed tables or speed humps, just if, if we came out there and had a, you know, had they typically do a study where they, you know, you do a survey and you ask how many people on the street want it, and if it can be afforded, and then it has to be studied to see if it's viable, you know, if it was coming to me, I would not vote for it, I, I don't, I don't care for it. There's other, other options that could be looked at in the future, I mean, you know, you, you can do things, traffic commuting tools like, you can put in many roundabouts, and you can put in different, different ways of channeling people in, in traffic, you know, I, I do like those more so than say the speed table, but, but I think it's more than just, just needing access for fire, police, I think it's a, it's a, it's, it, and as a city too, we look at what we call inner parcel connectivity, this is not really an parcel connectivity, but it's giving options for drivers to pull out, so I really, I'm really in favor of making sure that we have, have that, that type of access. As far as, just to touch on the, the speed, you know, in order to, in order to evaluate the speed, you have to do a speed study, they're going to look at the 85% total of what that, what the public is already traveling, you're telling me they're traveling fast, there are, you know, it's not going to be reduced, is it, the state one at that point, when they, when they do the study, the state's not going to let it, because it has to go through the state, 30 is pretty much the minimum.
No, it's 25 on every street in the city, like Covington Street.
No, I understand, but, but when you look at what the traffic pattern is and you compare it, they're not, it's, I'm just saying, if you did the studies, not going to show that it needs to be lowered, is the way I'm looking at it.
So, let me ask, Chief, if, if this passes and if it's built and opens, can we, to address Molly's concern, can we have some increased police presence there at the beginning to, you know, deter people from cutting through and to monitor the speed more closely on Covington?
We, we can do extra patrols, but if it's publicly accessible, I have no way of knowing if they're there for a fourth or not.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that, I'm not, I guess I'm not saying that, yeah.
There are some things that stay all about using for cut-throughs, there are some things there that were worth it done a number of years ago, over on Leeburg with the, what the credit union is, and you have to post some signs, that's place and certain things, so there are, that is something that can be done, and once that's done, it can be enforced, but that has to be in place.
So, like the sign at Ingalls that says no, no, no rain traffic, no, okay, nobody...
It's not. And the, we, we have done some, some, this is what Bob was saying, you, when we, if we get, if we ask for reductions, but it has to come through council, then we still have to send it for approval through the state, and we have done with the traffic count measure, speed and the number of vehicles and this like, where if you have to hit that percentile that the state had set in the studies that we've done, it's just not quite there now. And I hate to put it this way, could that change if you guys approve this and that's there, then mine, but I think that's, that's if, I don't operate on it, so, but as of today, it doesn't quite meet that percent.
Okay. When's the last time we did a, because I know the, the sign is up now, but I, am I right in understanding that we're not collecting data right now?
We still do it.
Is it collecting data?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, the same question, we've done three traffic studies to see about traffic commutatives, speed humps, and it never meets the threshold of 85% total, so while there are people speaking, it just doesn't meet the requirements that we're governed by to reduce it.
I do like the way this is laid out, where it's not conducive to driving straight through, though.
One other question, is this the final site plan? Shane?
So, this is, you know, prepared for the zoning, so it hasn't done the final, engineered all that sort of stuff, but this is, we're pretty confident in this layout, we don't think there are going to be major shifts in the layout, and it's, it's a...
Well, if we did want to do speed humps, can you put a condition that the traffic flow and layout would be conducive to not, in other words, not give me a straight shot, like pull in and pull straight out if you...
Yeah, can you adjust that, Shane, because you had talked about that?
I think, I think there, there would be a way to, 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 to provide that sort of language, that, you know, the interior driveway shall be designed to, you know, not allow it to be like a straight, I'd have to work some method a little bit, but, you know, there, I think there could be a way to address that, that the internal driveway layout shall be designed to minimize, you know, covered in traffic.
And let me ask you while you're up there, Shane, you and I spoke, and I appreciate what you did with the conditions of zoning, and you and I talked about the, the restaurant one.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
And I think we talked about going about, I asked you about going halfway, and I looked at, I did some math at the shop today, so halfway would be 350 feet off of Covington Street, how close can we get to that?
So, I think, you know, just, just kind of talking on, on the fly here, I think for, there's sort of two aspects to it, one is in a worst-case scenario where the medical office did not proceed, and you were going to put a restaurant use on the property, I think you'd want to have the ability to make that lot at least 400 feet deep, that's maybe on the deeper side, but at least 400 feet deep would give you enough room to do a restaurant there, the, the second scenario would just be, and this is just sort of thinking, trying to, trying to think of everything, you know, a lot of times these medical office buildings, sometimes you'll have like a little, like a subway or somebody with like a little sandwich joint on the first floor, you know, but in that case, the, the building would be close enough to Highway 78 to cover that. So, on the fly, I think if, if we could, you know, get to 400 feet deep off of 78, that's probably plenty of room for a restaurant use, 350 halfway, as you mentioned, probably deep enough, but I just, that's on the fly.
If we could tweak that number a little bit, it would really make the people that live around there happy, because they just don't want to be sitting there, I mean, I'm sure Dr. Koch fully expected to build there, he's no longer building there, we have the protection now, we know we're not going to live next door to McDonald's, and I'm sure the people living there will appreciate the fact that they're not going to live next door to a McDonald's, but to push it because you are, I mean, a restaurant would only make sense to front face 78, so if you could tweak that number a little bit, what number...
I agree, I think that's reasonable, and so if, if, if restaurants were prohibited within 350 feet of Covington Street, given that the parcel's 700 feet long total, we wouldn't object to that.
Okay. Can you make that correction, please?
Yeah, so, so we're not bouncing all around, we just say, so normally on Monday night, we have this discussion, we finalize our conditions for Thursday night, so let me go back this, so does, does the council agree with the condition of interior driveway to be designed with minimum cut-through traffic? Okay, does the council agree with no restaurant to be built within 350 feet of Covington Street as a condition?
No, no drive-through.
No drive, okay, no drive-through restaurants?
Yep.
Everybody good?
That's bad, we'll sit down.
Okay, now, how does that affect, I don't know if I made a squabble of you, Paul, does that affect them if they want to put a subway inside the building on the first floor or whatever, does that have any, that has anything to do with this?
You just said no to drive-through, right?
Yeah.
Well, that would be if they don't build their complex.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they build their complex, I don't see why they couldn't have the restaurant through.
If y'all want a condition on no drive-through restaurants, that's totally fine.
Okay, I'm just super careful, I don't want to squash the subway restaurant if they want to put one in.
Sure, it's fine.
No, nobody wants to squash the subway restaurant.
So, so let me ask y'all too, there's a list of conditions that we put on the Koch Dental property, can I just go down these and y'all just tell me what you like, what you don't like? Any kind of automotive body repair, automotive car wash, automotive parts store, repair shops, service stations? Is everybody good with keeping that as a condition? Okay, what about convenience stores, keeping that as a condition? Got drive-through restaurants addressed, garages, hotels? I, I don't want to take away every use for this property, but that...
There's a lot of use restriction, if you put them all together.
I think the main concerns that we hear from our citizens is they don't want any more gas stations.
Right. Right.
They don't want any more, you know, fast food, drive-through kind of things. And they also don't want any more, uh, oil change places. So, as long as we address those three.
Yeah, okay, so that leaves...
I think, yeah, I don't think we have to restrict every other business, so this piece probably can only ever be a medical office.
Okay, is everybody good with leaving hotels as an, an opportunity for this if? Okay. All right, same thing for any kind of recreation such as the Bollin Alex Gate, where maybe you'd, or y'all could leave that off the conditions? Eliminate it, so it can't go? So, you, you're taking that off recreation? Right.
It's restricted or permitted?
It's permitted.
Okay, permitted.
Okay, lawn mower repair shops, machine welding, radiator buffer shops.
Restrict, yeah, that's right in the middle of the table there.
Okay, recovered materials, processing facility. Restaurants and lounges.
Well, with the exception that they have to stay three hundred and fifty feet off of Covington Street.
Okay. Okay, any other discussions on those, those conditions? Okay, so then the buffer, can we talk about the buffer? I'd like to get everybody's feedback on the buffer, how do, how do y'all feel about the buffer?
I think if Ann is fine with it. I know, I'm not, you know, I, I'm pointing out who's watching.
I'm out her.
If she's okay with it, I can't imagine why we wouldn't, you know?
Okay, the parking, parking spaces, variance from parking spaces, break it, okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, let me just recount to make sure I get this right, this is the lot. Um, so we're all good with the annexation, with the conditions of the driveway design, the, uh, no drive-through restaurant, the list of the other items we just discussed as conditions?
Rezone, not annexation.
So, the conditions go under the rezone?
There is no annexation.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. Okay, so we're good on that. And we're good on the, uh, reducing the parking spaces and good on the buffer, okay? All right, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the rezone for case number R twenty-four dash zero thirty-one with the following conditions. The interior driveway to be designed to minimize the cut-through traffic. The restrictions on the property, if sold, would be no drive-through restaurant to be built within three hundred feet, three hundred and fifty feet of Covington Street. No automotive body repair, no automotive car wash, no automotive parts store, no automotive repair shops, no automotive service stations, no convenience food stores, no garages, no lawn mower repair shops, no machine welding radiator or buffer repair shops, no recovered materials processing facility.
I wanna clarify, I thought it was no restaurants at all.
It's no drive-through restaurants at all, and then no restaurants within three hundred and fifty feet of Covington Street.
So, there's no, no, yeah, you got that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just amended as stated, I mean, y'all can always say it is amended as stated.
Amended as stated.
Thank you, Paul.
Clarify, please, on the restaurants. I understand no drive-through restaurants.
At all.
But that doesn't eliminate other restaurants, does it?
No, and it doesn't eliminate, no, it doesn't eliminate restaurants.
Sit down and fast forward.
But any kind of restaurant would have to stay three hundred and fifty feet off of Covington Street. But there's no drive-through restaurants at all.
Okay.
Okay, there's the motion.
You want to amend your, you can do it.
As stated, as stated.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Okay, next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the major variance for case number V twenty-four dash zero thirty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved.
Okay, the last one on this list is, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a major variance for case number V twenty-four dash zero three-three.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's passed.
Thank you. A lot of discussions went on this week about that, so thank y'all, everybody, for working together.
Thank you.
Okay, the last on our agenda, Robbie's gonna bring the last case into the record.
All right, the final case for you this evening is case number R twenty-four dash zero three-four, Kittle Homes, it's filed in application. Three zone, twenty-six point zero seven acres, located at forty-six fifteen Atlanta Highway, involving map and parcel number LG one-one zero one eight-seven, LG one-one zero one eight-seven A zero-zero, and LG one-one zero one eight-five C zero-zero, and LG one-one zero one eight-five B zero-zero, Alton County, Georgia. Property owners can family partnership, the current zoning is CH. The requested zoning is RN six for the development of a townhome community. This was approved by, uh, recommended for approval by staff, and it was recommended for denial by planning commission.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to ask the applicant, they'd like to come up to the podium and tell us what you're asking for the council tonight.
Yes, hey, my name is Zachary.
Let me, let me say this, I'm sorry, um, at this time I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, my name is Zachary Kittle, I live in Littleburg, Georgia. Um, we're asking for us to table this until February. We want to get with the residents on Cowan Road, talk to them, and then, uh, get with the city, obviously on our, try to fix what's on Cowan Road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, because we, we advertise the public hearing, we need to do a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in favor? Okay, anyone like to speak in opposition?
I just have a question, are we...
Yes, ma'am, you'll tell your name and, name and address.
My name is Shane Wade.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
And I live at two oh six Cowan Drive. Um, I'm opposed to the, but I don't know, are we voting on this? I'm a little confused.
So...
Okay, so do I need even say?
Well, what'll happen next after we close, close the hearing is that we will have a discussion, take a vote on whether to approve his, his table request or not. So, yeah, she may speak.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, tell us what you...
Um, well, um, I think, I was here the last time for the city council that, um, denied it, but we, um, Cowan Drive, we only have eight houses, I believe, and I find that's right across the street with the circle driveway where they were proposing to bring, um, as one of the exits onto Cowan Drive. Um, Cowan Drive already has complete traffic from the Growers Outlet, as you well know, um, which is already a disaster at times of the year. Um, and we are just very concerned, the residents on the street, of adding a hundred and fifty townhomes plus, say, two cars per house or three, depending on how many people live there. So, you're talking about another five hundred cars that would enter on Cowan Drive. Um, so, that was our biggest thing, the townhomes, we thought looked wonderful, and I think that would be a great addition. Um, but the traffic on Cowan Drive, just the exit into Cowan Drive, we were trying to see, at first they said they had, um, a way to go out seventy-eight. I know everybody's concerned about the left-hand turn, but we're more concerned about how much people will be on Cowan Drive with already Growers Outlet. Because if you sit at that light, which I do a lot, as you know, the traffic coming down twenty already backs up all the way to Cup and Saucer or to City Hall at five o'clock. So, even if you change the lighting, it goes longer this way to let more people out of Cowan Drive, you're only backing up all the way into Grayson. So, I mean, that was, I think, another solution they had thought about, was changing the lighting, but you're only backing up the other side of twenty going that way. So, I mean, I think, just as a resident, we're just opposed to the actual extra traffic coming onto Cowan, and it's very small. Um, if they could figure out a solution, I think otherwise, to try to get the traffic going out the other way. Oh, and I heard something. Then I think, um, we would be looking forward to it. I guess they're gonna come talk to us too, but it's just the traffic, I think, um, that's our biggest thing.
Okay.
What else to say?
Okay.
I mean...
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Okay, anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, please come to the podium. If you would, uh, tell us your name and address, please.
Hi, um, Susan Thomas, I live at two forty-four Cowan Drive. We have lived in our house forty-eight years. We've been on Cowan Drive that long. My husband has been a Longmont City resident for seventy-four years. I've been a resident of Longmont for fifty-two. So, we've been here a long time. And if, I know you all know where Cowan Drive is, but have you actually been down Cowan Drive, past Growers Outlet? You talk about Covington Street being narrow, Cowan Drive is a one-lane street. If you meet somebody, you have to hit the ditch. So, it is a problem with adding extra traffic onto Cowan Drive. It's not just Growers Outlet, it's the traffic, excuse me, from the Quake Strip and then the other little strip mall across from Quake Strip, and also the, um, the other little strip mall feeds into that, so you have more than just Growers Outlet traffic. And it puts us stranded in our home on days when the traffic is so heavy. So, it is a problem. And it don't just back it up to twenty, it backs it up on seventy-eight. And you talk about it being a problem with making a left-hand turn. There are other people making left-hand turns. Look at McDonald's, people make left-hand turns all the time. There's your, um, the, um, American Legion, people make left-hand turns all the time. So, it's, I know it's danger, but it's gonna, it's be even more dangerous with more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And is there any, um, need for discussion? Anybody have any questions here in light of them asking to table? Okay.
So...
Sorry, go ahead.
We, we are gonna discuss, or...
That's what I just said, you wanna discuss?
Sure, I mean, just, we're gonna talk about table, but, but also, I mean, obviously, traffic is a concern. They, the residents, there's two that spoke tonight, and we, we all, we all know what it's like at Cowan Drive. That's, that's a huge thing that you all are gonna have to face if you're gonna, if this thing gets tabled. The other thing is, is Robbie, Robbie had your, your staff report, did they see your notes for you? Did you give them your notes from your staff report? So, I mean, there's, there's issues with, you know, like the number of units per building and all that, that, that hopefully that type of thing will be, will, will be addressed too.
Yeah, the, the issues like that typically go through the plan review process. It, it's not necessarily, um, restricted to the, uh, application. P U V is only one where they are restricted to their site line that they show you.
So, you're saying that'll be corrected? Gotcha.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'd like to, like to make a motion that we table case number R twenty-four dash zero three-four until the February meeting.
Can I have one? I have one caveat, please. Uh, I would like to see the February meeting being with the planning and zoning commission, and then they come to us in March. I'd like them to take a look at what's, what's gonna be developed.
Okay, so normally we don't have to sit about the planning and zoning, but you're asking that we do sit about planning and zoning?
Yes.
In February?
Yes, y'all, y'all have that option. So, if you wanna table it, you can table it. You can also send it back down to planning commission, uh, for further consideration. That, that is also an available option, available to you underneath your zoning orders, and I think that's what the mayor is asking for. So, you, you can table it, and y'all can take it back up and reconsider it, uh, at February meeting, or you can re, basically remand it to the planning commission for further consideration there based upon any directive or information that you provide to them, along with just the general comments that have been had. Either of those are appropriate, uh, uh, choices for you to take.
If we send it back to planning and zoning, that would give the public another opportunity to come and speak out again?
It certainly would. Um, there is no requirement for additional public hearing, there's no requirement for additional advertising, but of course, staff can put it out there, um, you know, and let folks know that there'll be additional, uh, meetings and different, additional opportunities here. This is the required meeting that occurred, well, that's one that already occurred at public, uh, planning commission. But of course, it, you know, more meetings, more opportunity for people to talk.
If, um, if we, if we send it down, back down, is there any time constraints that that put them under? Like, if we table it till February, they get till February to regroup. If we send it back down to P and Z, do they have to see them next month? Like, what does it do to their timeline?
I think so. Y'all, you can send it back when you want to, to the January meeting or...
If it were, if it comes to us tomorrow.
I, the question I have, can I, if we do that, can I go and see them in January and see you guys in February? Would that be okay?
That's what I was gonna raise, and we do not have a meeting in December. Uh, we, our next meeting is January.
So, I would go see them in January, planning, and so I can see them in January, then if they say okay, then I'll go to you guys in February. That's okay with you?
I'll have one of that.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna talk to the residents and everything about that. I'll also have a baby on the way. It's like, first child, and, uh, it's due like February twenty-eighth, March second, playing the deal, so it's like, I need to get this kinda wrapped up before that baby gets this.
You should have thought about that before.
Yeah.
It's a boy.
You should have thought about that before.
I know. I didn't think it was a pushback, but yes.
Okay, so, Paul, there was a motion on the floor, does it stick, so what do we need to do at this point?
So, I mean, he's asking you to amend your motion, and so if you wanna amend your motion, then you certainly have to...
Okay, so I'd like to amend the motion to, for case number R twenty-four dash zero thirty-four, to table until the February council meeting. And then it must go back before the planning and zoning commission?
In January.
In January.
There you go.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Done.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing that we have, Mayor, is, uh, there, I was just told before the meeting started, we have an opening of the planning and zoning committee. Um, Robbie and I briefly talked about it, we'd like to get this position filled for the new year in January, so, um, there'll be more to come on that.
Okay.
And that's all we have.
Anything else?
That's all.
Have we given you adequate time?
Yes, can y'all please hurry up?
Okay, we'll move down to finance, human resource committee, Anne Hunsinger.
Sorry, I only have one item, but I'll be brief. Um, this is just a housekeeping item to renew the health insurance for the city employees. There's a copy of it in your packet, it begins on page one sixty-five. It's, uh, health and dental with three options, an HMO, a PPO, and a POS. Any questions? I think Christie would be the one that could answer those, uh, but you have no questions?
Well, my only question was, is this a, a three hundred thousand dollar increase? Or what was the three hundred thousand dollars? Is that the premium for a year, I mean, what is? I thought I saw three hundred.
Three hundred and ten for the car.
Three bucks, alright.
This is tech, this is technically just asking, we are offering a third plan that is due this year, the POS. We, um, healthcare costs, insurance costs, cost of board, we all know has skyrocketed.
Yep.
And the increases, just like everything else, were crazy. So, we looked at several other plans that GMA has shopped out and offered, and we felt like the POS was a good option for the city as well as for the employees that may not want to continue paying what they're paying for their HMO or the PPO. So, it's just actually giving them that third option of the POS.
Okay, do you, how do you have some questions?
Uh, yeah, it's dental, no, this year, Christie.
Or has that always been?
No, we've always had dental. The provider, though, has changed, um, and what has been Delta Dental in the last several years, it is going to Anthem. Um, I think GMA got, we, people have been having trouble with Delta, so they shopped it out, and the best deal, they got back from us with no increase in the dental premium, was to go with Anthem.
Any other questions?
No, I just was curious about that.
Anybody else have any questions? Um, then I'd like to make the motion that we, uh, allow the city to add the POS plan and shock the rail. Is that right? Or just add the POS plan and renew the policy?
Yeah, we're just, we're just, just need to approve the adding of the POS.
I'd like to make a motion, as stated, to amend it as stated. We could use that new language there, Paul.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it is approved.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And now we'll move to public safety committee, Melanie Law.
Um, I spent so much time getting ready for all the other stuff tonight that I don't have anything for myself. Thank you. Other than to thank all the police officers
Yes, ma'am.
and our first responders for everything they do, and acknowledge that we did have a wonderful Veterans Day celebrations. Um, the American Legion again, once again, was, um, above and beyond in their hospitality and inviting all the council there. Y'all missed a great dinner Saturday night, wonderful speakers. And then, uh, what an honor to be able to recognize our veterans on Monday. And so, I do appreciate that, and I appreciate all of our first responders. Thank you.
Very good. We'll move now to Public Utilities Transportation Committee, Bill Devall.
Thanks, Mayor. I've got a few items to conclude into tonight. Um, we'll start with the first one, which is the nineteen, twenty nineteen FEMA award for generator. So, uh, like it says, in twenty nineteen, the, the city sought a grant for the Hazard mitigation grant program for the waste water treatment plant that was to, uh, fund a thousand kilowatt generator. So, time went on, and, uh, taking them quite a while, they finally reached back to, uh, the city, uh, with approval of the grant. And, uh, but, you know, in the meantime, in twenty twenty, uh, they actually, the city was developing, obviously, the plant and, um, went ahead and purchased this generator for, for the plant. So, what, uh, what's available is a hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars from the grant with a matching, a match of forty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-seven. Total is a hundred seventy-one thousand nine hundred nine dollars. So, what the, what the city's asking us to do is to, uh, approve this and process the grant in which they, in which case they will, uh, purchase a one hundred fifty kilowatt inlet pump station through this grant that will be used as a backup, uh, backup, uh, power, any power of the situation. You also notice that there is a, uh, an engineering cost because we're getting this, uh, it's gotta be developed. Precision planning has given us a price of, of eighteen thousand dollars, um, that will, you know, need to be to put it all together. Hope I've gotten all that right, Danny. Anybody have any questions?
Um, I do. So, the eighteen thousand dollars is not reflected in the total project cost of a hundred and seventy-one nine oh nine, correct?
Yep.
Okay, well, it just says total project cost, one seventy-one nine oh nine, so the eighteen thousand is in addition to that cost, correct?
Right, like, this is listed on your, on the agenda, so it's ninety-nine percent.
I know, but I'm looking at the letter here.
Yeah, sure.
The staff report. And then, so, but the, the letter from Brian Kemp says that the total cost approved is five hundred eighty-nine thousand. So, we're not taking five hundred eighty-nine thousand. We're only taking a grant for the hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-two.
We were awarded for both generators. We've already purchased one. They will not reimburse us because we bought it without their approval, so denied it. So, we want to get that one, uh, generator, the four hundred fifty kilowatt generator.
Okay. And then, the city shares the forty-two nine seventy-seven, and then as well as the precision planning. What, is that a budget? Are those budgeted items? Where's that coming out of?
It's gonna come out as fund. It's not a budgeted item.
It'll come out of?
It's, it's fund.
General fund, okay.
Well, they're enterprise.
Enterprise fund.
Okay.
Yep.
That was all I had. Thank you.
That, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, the, the funds available and the, the matching funds for this, uh, uh, project, including, including, uh, engineering cost.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
And we have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good, that is approved.
Thank you. All right, uh, so the second item on our agenda is, um, the detention pond at Park Place. We've got numerous issues that's going on. I know that, I'll say that I, I had, I had conversations with people even when I ran for, walk, walk, you know, going through their, their community, uh, five years ago. But it's been gone a long time. So, what this, uh, city's looked at, they had precision planning, looked at it, um, developed, you know, a proposal for it. So, the, uh, I'm gonna flip it to it here, I'm sorry. And I actually missed it. Lots of papers. So, all right, there we go. So, the, what the city did is they, they, there's a, in order to make the necessary repairs for this, um, uh, this detention pond, they sought, uh, sought a, uh, contract. Uh, they were, they've got an approved bid from, from North Creek for a hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. There's an engineering cost of, by precision planning, of seven thousand five hundred dollars. This pro, this is, like I said, it's been, precision planning elevated it to an emergency just due to the potential for, um, you know, not big catastrophic, but you, you've got Baker Carter down there that, you know, you could have a, another incident like we had at Breckenridge. It's been going on for a long time. You know, we, obviously, back in November of twenty twenty-three, we took measures to try to, try to make a repair for it. You know, in the case of where you've got homeowners that are stuck with the buildings, you know, a hundred, almost a hundred seventy thousand dollars, this is gonna, the city's gonna get, uh, this is gonna be a one-time event. They're, I mean, we're fixing it to, to be repaired. And then, uh, then they're gonna make sure that they, they'll talk with the, the homeowners and make them understand that this is, you know, they're, they're there. They're getting the access to it, just like we did with, uh, the other, other events. Danny, want, anything to that work? Ask some questions?
No, it pretty much covers it. It is a pond they've been dealing with for some time. It got legal. We had to get Paul. When he first came on, he'd, he dealt with this for almost a year, going back and forth. Uh, it was some legal stuff with the plat. We thought it was HOA's property. We argued that. They, their attorney argued against it. That's when Paul came on. This is when we were going through different attorneys that lead you to Robin or Robin to Paul. So, Paul got podged and gave me the sad news that, uh, we need to fix it.
So, you thought Danny, or the city thought that it was their property, and it turns out to be ours, or is that what you're saying?
No, my understanding, origin was the HOA's property.
Right.
But when we, when Paul reviewed the legal documents, it turned out it was, actually belongs to two property owners instead of HOA. So.
And they don't have any money?
Uh, it's never created. It, it, they, Brandon and I have been working this for quite some time, um, and just, they don't have the money to fix it. If we don't do something, uh, engineers told us that you're gonna have a road that could potentially wash away. Because it has, it's a live stream. It's a retention pond with a live stream that runs through, um, Baker Carter. So, it's gonna need to repair sooner than later.
Oh, it's hard. Look at the pictures, and there's a video too. It's just, phew, nasty. Uh, but why won't it fix like back when, you know, problems started occurring or, or been?
So, if you recall, what we went through with the other detention ponds, this is just another similar situation, but really candidly even more complicated. Because this is one of those neighborhoods that was built in phases. This neighborhood has covenants. This neighborhood actually addresses the issue of detention ponds. But the only detention pond that the neighborhood HOA covenants control is the other detention pond it's part of. And I don't have a file from me called Phase Two. This is Phase One. So, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about this on the last ones. Um, and we spent a lot of time working with the HOA's attorney, trying to get them on board. They said they're not going to. Now, I mean, here's the bottom line about it. It's no different than the other parcels. You have an detention pond that is sitting on the ownership of two just private homeowners. And the beneficiaries of those detention ponds are the, call it fifty or sixty lots of this neighborhood. But there is no cost-sharing allocation mechanism in place.
So, they don't have to pay for it, right?
And so, if you want to seek code enforcement to go after these two property owners for these, I mean, you can. But you, you got the same exact situation that you did on the other ones. So, additionally, y'all, as the city, have an obligation to keep the stormwater system working correctly, um, even to the extent that it deals in property at times, especially when you're in a submerged situation. So, I mean, we, you do the same thing we did on the other ones. You get an agreement that says, we're coming in, we're fixing it. We're not acknowledging this is our problem. We'll fix it because it needs to be fixed, and y'all got to deal with it later. But there is no denying the reality that until that neighborhood, you know, addresses this detention pond, those two property owners have exposure. Um, and, uh, but is there anybody else that's gonna fix it, if you guys?
Is there any legal way, Paul, to attach a lien to the two property owners that actually own this pond? So, when they sell their property, we can get our, recover our money?
There is.
There is?
Oh, yeah.
So, why don't we take that route? Because this is like the third time we're gonna do this one time in these subdivisions.
If you would like us to do that, I will do that, but I, um.
If you're gonna go that route, why don't you just take the property? Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, that, can we do that? We can. The results of it, um, my prediction would be that you would not like the results of that.
I mean, I'm going to recognize I may not support that. I do not support, we're going after the homeowners either.
Me neither.
Because you're talking about footing the bill of this detention pond that essentially has roughly fifty to sixty beneficial owners, uh, onto two property owners who most likely don't have the financial.
But you can't divide it, all the properties, you can't put something against them?
Not if they don't own it.
Well, I mean, my question is, I mean, because this, we're seeing a pattern here. We just fixed, what, three earlier this year? Now this one? There's gonna be more follow-up? Where's our breakdown? What's the problem? These properties aren't becoming this, I mean, I've, I've asked video to be here. If you looked at this video, that didn't happen overnight. So, where, where's the problem? When the, when it first started happening, were they given a citation? Because they could have fixed it. The property owners could have fixed it when it was a fifteen hundred dollar problem. Now, it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars that, look, it isn't on my property, but my taxes are gonna pay to fix somebody else's problem.
No, it's not, this is not tax revenue. This is enterprise revenue.
It's where?
It's enterprise revenue because it has a stormwater utility.
Okay.
But to answer your question, it is not a singular problem. But I will tell you where generally the problems like these began. Twenty-five plus years ago, when these neighborhoods were developed and the stormwater management regulations were not as exacting as they are today. Let's take a recent example. Y'all's current, uh, iteration of it was when you had the folks wanting to put their fences in their yards. And then they couldn't put their fences in their yards, and everybody was upset about it. Well, the reason why they couldn't is because the stormwater regulation said, "We've got to manage stormwater systems in a way that these systems can remain intact and work correctly." I can't tell you the entire history of this neighborhood, although a year ago, when we worked through this, we pulled it all. But when these neighborhoods were developed, stormwater management regulations and essentially the oversight of stormwater, first off, you didn't have a stormwater utility at that time. A lot of jurisdiction fitted. But this particular plat identified this as the detention pond area. And there were no regulations about, you can't put the stormwater management system on private property. You need to put it in the HOA there so that there's a mechanism for control. So, you can't point the, where did this problem start? I mean, I understand your concern. I'm not dismissing it. It's multiple places where it started. But it started years ago, long before any of y'all were sitting on this council. Basically, when these neighborhoods were developed and stormwater management development ordinances or regulatory ordinances really weren't up to speed of what they need to be. And, and so now you're dealing with it, and there's ways to keep trying to work dealing with it. But I mean, y'all just dealt with it on that fence issue. It's the same thing. It's like, wait a minute. You can't mess up our stormwater, uh, drainage achievements. They didn't know that. Same thing is true for these two property owners. I don't know who they are, but I can almost guarantee you that they don't know they own this detention pond. They don't know that they have an obligation to maintain it. And if you attempt to cost the, so, see, the cost of the repairs with those properties, that's, my estimation is that's probably a catastrophic financial then as to the real property owners of those two homes.
Well, let me ask you, because I don't know the terms of things or how things work. Well, first of all, let me ask you this. Well, we, we rewrote our detention ordinance. Was it last year or a year before last day? It was right after I got elected. We worked on that.
December twenty-two.
And are you familiar with our current detention ordinance?
I am familiar with the fact that right before I came on, precision planning had worked to
redo some of the, what I call the design metrics.
Are we covered moving forward for new developments coming in to not allow something like this to happen? Because you're talking about this?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so that was one.
And, and the reason why is, is because your developer, Robbie can speak this. Basically, all your stormwater management devices cannot be located within the four corners of single-family lots. They have to be located within the common areas.
Okay.
But that's been on that for a while.
It's been active for a while.
That happened because of that.
Which goes to the issue of why this is the earlier phase of this neighborhood, and the detention pond is not subject to HOA control. But the later phase of the neighborhood is subject to HOA control. And we even dealt with the fact that they had to do some cleanup on the other pond. And I'm gonna speak out of turn, Michael. And they did do that cleanup. The HOA took care of that pond. They said, "Why don't I take care of this?" Well, I mean, what do you make them take care of?
So, if it's on HOA property, then we're gonna require them to take care of it, period?
Yes.
Is that what you're basically saying? Okay.
Like, I mean, look, I know what y'all's concerns are. They're valid, very valid concerns. You wanna know the real way to solve this problem?
Yeah.
Okay, get the neighborhood to all vote in that that is an important common element that should be controlled by the HOA. But that is a private concern. It is not y'all's. But it is y'all's because you've got an emergency repair you need to do. But the right way to fix this globally for everybody to do the right thing is for that detention pond to be maintained by the HOA. But the HOA has to choose to do that.
Well, my other question was, and I don't know the terminology that I'm looking for. Um, because part of this letter says that it was due to erosion and faulty outage structure. So, you can't go back, obviously, twenty-five years on a piece of property and claim a warranty. But do we not require bonds to be held or anything on these structures that are built so that years down the road?
Yeah, but not for that kind of period of time. When you're talking about performance bonds and maintenance bonds, you're talking about twelve-month, eighteen-month, on the very back end, thirty-six-month type bonds. Not.
So, all the other ponds that are out there? That are gonna start?
The plat, final plat, they have twenty-four months. After that twenty-four months, if it's not fixed, we use a bond. If not, I sign a release.
So, there's, but I'm just saying, there's nothing we can?
Yeah, so this was a phase that was built before. We had a stormwater problem. This is when they put retention ponds on private property. Now, it's on HOA property. So, I know what you're saying. Why didn't the court get involved? Court was getting involved, and then we got a pod, and we're like, well, we can't.
So, you're saying we were turning, we were giving them citations?
This was already turned over to the code enforcement. So, stormwater goes out there and fails them. You saw the report, they failed them. They don't do nothing. It gets, code enforcement gets involved. They have to write a violation. How long he gives is up to that officer. Once that's not done, then he gets a citation up here before court. But once that process starts, stormwater can never have communication with them until the judge or the municipal court decides what he wants to do. I can tell you, a case has went before the judge for a retention pond, and all he did was apply them seven hundred fifty bucks. And we're still left with a pond that's not in plots.
Now, I saw one of the quotes said something about the fences to be replaced and all this. And if you watch the videos, that is fenced in. So, when they get done with these repairs, will there or will there not be fencing back on them?
Brandon has to speak. This covers all the fence as well, the repairs? This will be in compliance with the city, this company, if y'all choose to hire them, bring a bond in compliance, like they did with toller shelves. And I believe toller shelves had a fence that had to be replaced too.
So, Paul, um, should we start on our rezoning cases, although we can enforce it, I know that? Should we start putting that as a, uh, condition?
It's already there. It's in your development regs now. That's the point I'm making is, is that, is, is that, um, you know, all the detention ponds can now for future projects be like this one is. But a great example of where it could was those drainage fields, those drainage achievements, right? You know, and, and, so we made that tweak in your development regs, I guess, a few months ago. So, even though. So even those drainage fields can't be, or drainage easements, uh can't be within the four corners of the single-family residential. So just in the last twelve months, y'all took affirmative steps to further clean up your stormwater management uh development regulations in a way that tries to further prevent this.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, you're never going to get away from every single one of this. Cause these are stormwater management devices that y'all have a stormwater utility, so you've accepted that responsibility. Although it's a shared public-private responsibility. Um but I mean, this has to be fixed. The engineers are telling you it's emergent in nature. Um and are there ways to seek recourse against those two property owners? There probably are. And if y'all want me to pursue that, I will. It would not be my recommendation if you did.
Well, not for just the two owners, I would.
I thought there was, like, it looked like there were sixteen homes that this, that according to like this. They're not gonna have, they're not gonna have money.
That's the problem. Yes, there are sixteen homes that are probably in floodways. But there are two property owners who have the dirt that's gonna be fixed.
Kinda like the uh Toller, had the four.
How many ponds, how many more ponds are out there that would be falling into this category? I mean, how many?
There's nine ponds, Brandon, that are private. Not ancient. How many ponds are private property now? Nine? I don't know, we looked at that a while back. There's like a hundred and seventy retention ponds and I think nine are technically on private property where they're owned by one or two people, like Toller Shoals.
And how many of them have we already fixed?
Just, this will be the second one. We fixed the ones that we approved.
Well, we fixed three.
Well, I'm talking about, we, we, this is the second time we came before y'all. We fixed the ones in Toller Shoals. Where else?
I think five.
Yeah. Yeah, we did one. The last, yeah, it was the last whatever council we had, we had that packet of ponds.
Right.
Yeah, and then this.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. So, as I understand it, just to summarize, the pond, the pond is technically the responsibility of two property owners. They have let it go for twenty-plus years? Is that? No, no maintenance has been done on it for a significant period of time?
That's what it appears to be, I guess.
Okay, and since it's an emergent problem, the city's gonna cover it as long as the two homeowners agree to essentially hold us harmless and that it's a one-time thing and it's their responsibility?
Correct. We use the same agreement that we drafted on the prior ones, um that basically say that we're fixing it, we're not acknowledging that it's our problem. Um and that it, and you're acknowledging that it continues to be your problem.
Okay, but there's nothing we can do, from what I understand, from this exact same thing happening and then doing nothing and in twenty years being right back in the same place?
You could be back in the same place. The correct global solution is, is for that HOA to take, to take responsibility for this um detention pond. Because the logical reality of it is, is that the members of that HOA are all benefiting from it. Or at least the members on this side of the watershed are benefiting from it.
Well, that brings me to a question. Could we assist these two homeowners in preparing a quick claim to the HOA for the part of the property that is the ponds?
No.
No.
Because that's not going to place any legal obligation on the HOA to maintain.
So the HOA would have to vote and all that other stuff and bring it in, which they probably won't do because?
Which we asked them to.
Yeah, okay, and they, the HOA is not interested in taking it on?
I'll blame them. So if, if these two homeowners, these property owners sign the agreement, oh yeah, sure. Yeah, no, we got it, we got it from here. They sell their house in five years.
It should be out, it should be out of disclosure.
Correct, okay.
When you buy a house, it has disclosures, we'll run that. And everybody agrees with me.
Right. Tell me, does this go ahead? Is it just a matter of, of it's on, on their?
I mean.
Deeds and their titles, if they have a condition, I mean, how, I mean, like, like Ian said, we could be fifteen years right back in here fixing this pond again.
Absolutely correct, you could be. And there are not a lot of good solutions to not do.
Danny, you have to make a request somehow to add these two locations to code enforcement where they're checking in quarterly? And that we are, we are finding and, and finding, we're staying on top of this so that it doesn't happen. I, I don't think we have a choice but to approve it, but if we were on it and did a violation three times a year, we might be a way ahead. But if we could add that to the calendar on code enforcement?
And not just that one, it's the other, what'd you say, there's nine, nine ponds?
Yeah, there's nine, yeah, I think they need to be constantly inspected.
Yeah, we've inspected this pond five years in a row and five years has failed. It's not us not inspecting, it's, it's, it's hard to hold somebody to fix a pond that serves multiple parcels. But that's the way it was when they sold the land. They didn't know they were buying a retention pond that serves as a subdivision.
Yeah, and I agree with everything you're saying, but if, if we can, if the, if the fines start getting imposed and maybe.
Yeah, and who says the guy in a mouse?
Judge.
Okay.
It is.
Yeah, that's.
That's what we understand that, I want y'all to understand, when y'all call me, say, hey, do something. Once it gets to the code enforcement, the city staff can no longer have contact with that person. It has to go, and whatever the ju, the judge dismisses it, they dismiss it and there's nothing we can do. Except to start the process over again.
And we don't have any say in, hey, we need these fines to be a certain, okay?
We cannot tell the judge what he can and can't do. That, and these, and this property went to code enforcement, you know, went to that process, it just, this is a state of Georgia problem. I just got an email from about twelve cities with this same problem. That you got Walton County deals with it, Wana County did, everybody deals with it, these homes were built in the early, late nineties, early two thousands. And these poor individuals are stuck with tens of thousands of repairs and they just don't have it. And nine times out of ten, they don't even know it's their property. After a week, I'm knocking.
This is not a unique problem to y'all and it is not a problem that was any one creation, someone, one qua, caveat, what he said, you cannot accept the fine. Uh you can change the ordinance to set what a minimum fine would be for certain citations. Uh and then your maximum is capped by Georgia law and other constitutional law. So your maximum fine would be just a quarter of a thousand dollars on most circumstances. Some stormwater management fines actually are allowed to go to twenty-five hundred. But most of the time, uh Danny's completely correct, y'all stay out of fine setting. That's the judge's verdict, not y'all's. You can set minimums, that's it.
So to, just to go back to the inspection part of it, so is this, is the stormwater, is it twenty percent or?
Actually, the state law says twenty-five percent per year, but we do a hundred percent. Is that correct?
So.
So every pond gets inspected once a year?
We're not, we're not, we're not inspecting once a year.
Oh, that's good.
We, we, we try to inspect a hundred percent of our ponds every year, correct?
When did you change that? Cause last time, when I was working on the um, the detention ordinance, it was twenty percent a year. When did we go to?
No, the law says twenty percent, but we, we, we try to do a hundred percent. Uh that really started in two thousand and twenty when we actually hired the first true stormwater supervisor. That actually trained a stormwater. Um he's currently here, he's a foreman, he, he has three guys, I believe, under him, four guys. So since then, I know we can do it.
Okay, anything else? So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the uh, the, the repairs as, as listed in our market for, I lost the total price again. Sorry. One seventy-one.
Three nine seventy.
One seventy-one, four seventy-five. Um incl- including that we, in addition, that we ensure that the, the nine ponds that we've identified, that we ensure that those are inspected annually.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those who vote, approved.
Alright, thank you. Third item on our agenda is um about a, an adoption of a flow rate restrictions on plumbing fixtures. So uh the, Brandon is, is seeking to obtain a funding through a GFA, GFA loan. Uh so as part of that, they uh, they want the language that we are uh, that we use plumbing fixtures that, that are high efficiency. And they, they do that, our, we have adopted the uh Uniform Building Code. And as far, as far as, just like everybody else does, however, um what, what they're asking us to do is to adopt that. And what we, what this ordinance is, it will adopt in, in the section into our code. Just stating that we are gonna use these high efficiency fixtures, which we are already doing. But in doing that, it, and then it'll, it'll help this process with the GFI loans.